Hello friends, those of you who are here. I'm just getting logged on. Who's here with us today? Oh, there's a few of them. You guys, alright. Give me one sec, I'm still getting set up. Okay, let's see who is here. Hello Parth. Hi Serena, Ronit's here. Hi Surya. Rudra, my boy. Archit's here. I'm doing okay, Ronit. Today was a decent day. How was your day? Akshat is here. We got seven people so far. Small crowd, but small crowds are sometimes really good because we can get more done. How's everybody doing today? Tell me how your guys' day was. Who is that? Rayon? What up? Ronit, yours is good, I'm glad. Anita, Ishida is here. What's up, Archit? Raydog? Parth, your day was good. Surya, things are going well. You guys have had two awesome days hopefully of getting to sleep in, right? Juniors not so much, they've had to be there at 7:45 both today and yesterday. But hopefully you guys are well rested and feeling good. Right? Hopefully? Ishida, yesterday was better than today. I've kind of liked both of them. I honestly like this schedule that we've had. Mine is the poor juniors kind of suffering. Overall, if school was like that, that'd be pretty cool, wouldn't it? You start at 11:30 and you end at 3:00. Still get a lot done hopefully. Hi Karunia. Karunia, you are quite possibly one of the most polite and kind students I've ever had. I know there are many, many of you. But Karunia's name definitely stands out. Alright. Let's see. Ronit, am I gonna reveal the A-level question? That's kind of a, that's a funny question. There's really nothing to reveal, to be honest. I mean, you know that it's gonna be a VIST, right? That's, I can tell you it's gonna be a VIST. And I think you can apply VIST to anything, so look at it that way. Yeah? Gandar, hey man, how's it going? It was awesome seeing you in Ms. Learner's class. Um, let's see. What about me? Rayon, you're one of my students. I wish you were one of my kiddos. Gandar, you are incredibly polite as well. So many of you guys, I don't know, it's, like I always say, I am blessed to work with all of you. It's a, you all are phenomenal human beings and I'm blessed. I see Rishikh joining us. Hi Rishikh. Rishikh, your Raiders just got a good wide receiver. Hopefully that works out for you guys. Okay. Yeah, should we get down to business? Alright, so Surya, what concepts are you going to put on the test? So Surya, these will be the same concepts we had last time. And the only thing that'll just really be added to it is cladograms. And let's see what else, what else? We talked about the oxygen worksheet, that'll be on there. We'll have part of what we're covering tomorrow and Thursday, which is going to be skin color for humans. And then human evolution will be the other thing that's on there. And these are the things that I'm adding that weren't on there last time. Alright. Yeah, Ishida, I don't know why it says error for you. Will human impact on evolution be on the exam? Yes, Rishikh, it will be on the exam. How's micro-evolution different than macro-evolution? Anita is asking, so the difference is really the changes that happen in an allele frequency or really more importantly, in a population. So are these changes small, are they just kind of a matter of color? Like there's, you know, more, say brown moths than beige moths? That would be a micro example, a macro would be something a little more severe. Alright. Archit, am I gonna post a study guide? So Archit, this would be the same thing I put on Google Classroom last time. It's just the concepts that we've added to it are just a few more, right? So again, just to kind of go over it, so we got human evolution and human impact on other organisms, which we covered in class today and yesterday. We have human skill, skin color, which we're doing tomorrow and the day after, depending on your period. We are doing cladograms and we're doing basically, yeah, just human evolution and the oxygen worksheet. So those are the things that are being added to our existing list already. Okay. Ishida, you still can't see me? Should I, I guess, log out and come back in? Alright. Surya, be more specific. What would you like me to go over in regards to human evolution? Because there's, there's a lot there. Can you explain the three selections? Yes, Ronit, disruptive, stabilizing, and directional. So yeah. To begin with, let's think about breeding bunnies, right? Breeding bunnies was an example where we had naked bunnies, which were the homozygous recessive. And then we had furry bunnies and they could have been homozygous dominant or heterozygous. So in this situation, the medium or the intermediate would be the heterozygous ones. And the two extremes would be homozygous dominant and homozygous recessive. So in a situation where you have stabilizing selection, that's when you would see the heterozygous ones basically succeeding and kind of, I guess, having the best, having them being the most in the population. An example of disruptive would be when you see the two extremes, right? And the intermediate ones aren't doing so well. And then directional is when one of the extremes is doing well. Alright. Let's see. Give an example of VIST and explain it. Ronit, I would take a lot, buddy. I think what's really important for you guys to know is what you need to put down for, at least for my class, for what I'm expecting for VIST. So why don't we go over that real quick? So I think this hopefully will be helpful, Ronit. And since I was recently just grading A-level questions, I think this will be a good thing to cover. So when it comes to V, to variation, you can't just say variation, right? I want to see the words range. I want you to actually talk about that range, like tell me what that range is. So if we're talking about, for example, different colors of snakes, I want you to actually say there's a range of colors of these snakes. They go from this color to this color to this color. Okay? What else? I wanna have you talk about mutations and crossing over in the case of sexually reproducing organisms. And then let's go to the I. And I, I wanna have you say sexually or asexually reproducing. That's really important. You can also say genetically. And S for selection, you can say selection for, selection against, and selection pressure. Those are three things I wanna see. Alright? And then for T for time, I wanna see generations. I wanna see population. I wanna see allele frequency. And I wanna see macro versus micro. I think if you can remember those things, you'll be set no matter what example I give you. Okay? Alright, let's see where we at. Alright. Rishikh, thank you for explaining it. This is one of my favorite parts of doing these video lectures, that you all help each other out. Anita, what is an example of macro-evolution? I would say any, hmm, I would say any situation in which an organism after many generations has something that it sort of, that maybe, maybe didn't exist in the same way that it did back in the, in the population. Let me, you know what, let me look up a solid example for you, so that I'm not just kind of talking without providing you with solid evidence. So here, give me a sec. And I'm gonna choose a good example to show you hopefully. Let me see what I can find out here. Alright. Let's see what I can find for you, Anita. Alright, they keep wanting to define it. I know the definition. So here's how, how they define it in this one website. Macro-evolution refers to the concept of large-scale evolution that occurs at the level of species and above. So large scale, which is what kind of we're talking about, right? Alright, let's see. This is slow. It's low. My computer is being super slow. Okay, I found a decent website. This is alright, I guess. I'm gonna try to, you know what, I'm gonna keep searching and I'll try to look for more. Meanwhile, you guys can help each other with the questions that are popping up. I'm trying to find a reputable website instead of just looking it up wherever. Alright, let me see what I can find you. Okay, so I wanna, I wanna be able to send you something solid. An example of macro-evolution that I'll just tell you while I'm looking for stuff is basically like when you have, think about divergent evolution, right? You have speciation. It's an example where all of a sudden these two species are now, they have something that's definitely different and they can't necessarily even mate with each other anymore, right? That would be an example of macro-evolution. But I'm gonna keep looking so I can maybe send you a website or something that could help us out a little bit more. Alright, let me see where we at. Hey Jonathan, nice to see you. Anita, I have not forgotten about you, so I will come back to this. Alright. Why is Serena saying no problem? Surya, yes for the exam, the A-level question will be a VIST that is accurate. Cool. Alright, let me see where we at. Karunia, do we need to know the characteristics of the hominids? Karunia, I think what I really wanna focus on is just bipedalism, right? Walking on two feet. The advantages of it, the disadvantages of it. I wanna talk about stereoscopic vision, which is our eyes being forward-facing and having two of them, which has to do with perception. And I wanna focus on our thumb, which is sort of a grasping thumb. Those are three things that I would wanna focus on when it comes to characteristics of hominids. Can you go over primates? Surya, what do you mean? Like, be more specific. Give me a more specific question for me. Do we get, do we get VIST examples for practice? Jonathan, I shared three examples with you a little bit ago. So I don't know if you've done those, but if you haven't, those would be really good ones to, to practice. I can look for more tonight if you guys would like. I can send you more VIST examples. No problem, Anita, I'll keep going. Jonathan, Google Classroom, yes, that's where I shared it with you. That's correct. So see if you can look for it and find it. Practice those. If you want me to send you more, I can make a couple more. Gandar, our test is tomorrow, because, not tomorrow, what am I saying? Friday, because you guys are about a week ahead of us. Yeah, this Friday. Okay. Thank you Gandar. Are you, are you leaving us? Serena, Serena, I'm gonna ask you again, because I know I ask you this every time. Whose class are you in? Alright. Are we going to need to know what happens during a lactose intolerance test? I think I, I want you to understand what lactose intolerance is. And I just want you to understand the basics around that. How do humans fit into the cladograms of primates? So Surya, okay, so we fit into the cladogram because we are in a way the most recent, right? The most advanced out of all of them. So if you were making a cladogram, you know, this is your cladogram, you would basically see humans sort of up here at the end. Okay, don't they just give the patient some liquid with lactase in it and test what happens? Yeah, but I want you to know more than that. Oh Serena, you're in chat. Serena, have I met you in person before? What is adaptive radiation? Do we need to know it? Okay, Surya, so I didn't teach you guys adaptive radiation. So no, I'm not gonna put it on the test because it's something that I haven't taught you yet. Adaptive radiation though is when you have an event where a lot of, you know, something gets wiped out. Like a lot of organisms get wiped out for whatever reason. And then that then provides a niche, provides the opportunity for many organisms to kind of come about. Right? So I see adaptive radiation as like one big boom, all of a sudden nothing's left. And now there's a lot of opportunity for other organisms to kind of grow there and do their thing there. Alright, Gandar, you still here? Good, I'm glad you haven't left. Serena, we haven't met, you should come in sometime and say hello. I would love to meet you. Alright. Anyone ever drank kombucha before? I love this stuff. Do you need to know about taxonomy? Not, no Surya, you don't. Just cladograms. Alright, so I'm not seeing any questions. Gandar, you haven't heard of this? This is kombucha. This is basically like fermented mushrooms, so yeah, it doesn't, I'm not, I'm not selling it. I'm not making it sound all that exciting. And it's definitely an acquired taste. It is very vinegary, but it's phenomenal for you because it's got a bunch of good probiotics, a bunch of good bacteria that you can basically put into your gut. Will do lots of good things for you. Alright. Okay, so since I don't see any questions, I'm gonna go back to Anita's question. I'm gonna keep looking for examples of macro-evolution, because I wanna give her some solid examples. Alright, let's see, let's see, let's see. By the way, Anita, what is your email address? So that I can, you can either email it to me, in case you don't want people to see it, or you can just post it. But I wanna see what your email address is, so I can send you a couple things. Okay. Yeah, I'm finding some good stuff. Alright, so there's this one part that's talking about the time that has to do with macro and micro. So it says the only difference between micro and macro is the degree of, degree and time scale. Okay? We can see micro-evolution on the time scale of our own lifetime. But macro-evolution is seen in the time scale of tens or hundreds of thousands of years. And quite often in timescales of millions of years. This is why we can't directly observe macro-evolution in the time scale of our entire existence. Anita, I hope that helps, that time plays a huge role into it. Alright, let's see. Where we at? Yeah, Gandar, you're not interested anymore? I'm not surprised. It's good stuff though, man, if you, I think it's something that everyone should definitely try. And maybe give it more than one try, because I can tell you the first time I tasted it, I was like, this is some gross stuff. But now I'm a big fan of it actually. And because it's a process of fermentation, actually, this one that I bought, I wasn't sort of like, besides the cap, they usually put this plastic over it too. And the plastic is for 21 and over. Because of how much fermentation it takes place in there, there is some alcohol in there. Although really, it's such a minute amount that it's silly to say that it's an alcoholic beverage, because it's not, I mean, it is technically, but it's not nearly enough, in my opinion, to be considered an alcoholic beverage. Alright. Yeah, Anita, you've drank it before? What did you think about it? Is it that good? Gandar, I'm not gonna tell you that it's good, I just like it. I don't know if you will like it or not. Alright, Anita, I see your email. Perfect. I am gonna send you something, a couple different things from my email, so expect a few things in a few minutes. Alright. Alright, I found you one thing that I think you'll like. Let me find you something else. Alright, let's see. Are there other questions I can answer in the meanwhile? Anita, no problem, yeah. What should we mainly focus on for the test? Ronit, that's a great question, but I think that there's nothing I would say mainly focus on. I would say what you need to do is, you know, you got your quiz back. I know some of you have come in to see it. But come in and check out your quiz, it'll be that plus the new topics that we're covering. Rishikh, we are doing a review activity and I know you wanted me to do, what did you want me to do? What's the game that I can't think of right now? Speed dating. I don't have any speed dating cards, Rishikh, but I'm gonna try to make some tonight. Which means it's gonna be a very busy night for me, but I'll do my best to try to make something. Okay? Surya, that theory is basically the theory that the simplest explanation is the one that makes the most sense. Or the one that probably happened. Alright. Gandar, is it alcoholic or not? That was kind of confusing. Yeah, I know. This one is, this specific one is not, but I mean, here's the thing, here's how I see it. Anytime you ferment something, you're gonna end up with alcohol, right? So that's how I see it. So to me, it's the same thing as saying bread is alcoholic, because that's a process of fermentation too. Rudra, what idea do we need to know from the oxygen video that we watched last week? I would say if you can answer those questions, Rudra, you'll, you'll be fine. Serena, yeah? I, you agree too? Very little, like not enough to actually consider, in my opinion, an alcoholic drink. But know that there is, anytime you have fermentation, there's alcohol. Anita, you couldn't stand it? I'm not surprised, it's fine. Oh man, okay. Keshav is here? Did I say that right? Yeah, Rishikh, speed dating. Yeah Serena, your aunt loves it? Alright. Oxygenation video. Yeah, Keshav, you guys watched it too if you have, again, I think all bio classes watched it. Yep, and it will be on the test. You're correct. Hey Jenna, nice to see you. Alright, let me see what else I can send you. Okay. So Anita, I have found two things, I think will help you. Anita, whose class are you in again? Okay, there comes that email. Okay, let's see what else. Oh Gandar, your class watched it, but you didn't? What happened? Did you fall asleep or something? What are the advantages of the opposable thumbs for early primates, Surya? Opposable thumbs. So the advantages were that they could have grasped things, right? Grabbed things, maybe climbed with them, and then ultimately they could use them to make tools. Jenna, we'll be posting a study guide. So Jenna, somebody asked this question earlier. I don't know that it's necessary, because it's very much like the last one, plus we've added just a few things, right? It was just two weeks of material that we've added, which I mentioned in the beginning of the video. So make sure you go back and check out what's been added. Oh my god, Gandar, I was just joking, but I guess you were not. You did fall asleep. You just got notes from your friend on what happened and studied that, okay. Tools also. Yeah, Keshav, you're right. Making tools. Nikhil's here. Can you explain what opposable thumbs means? Oh, okay. So Nikhil, opposable thumb, is this thumb that we have, right? That sort of opposes all the other fingers? Which basically means that we can, they can go sort of in a way against each other or in the same direction like this, where it allows you to grab stuff, right? Okay. Anita, you're in chow. I love Ms. Chow, she's amazing. Right Anita, do you agree? I think she's awesome. Alright, let's see. Gandar, halfway through. It wasn't that long, was it, that video? Okay. I see, I see. Yeah, Keshav, bringing the definitions to the house. I appreciate it, Keshav. Thank you very much. I see a future TA in Keshav right there. Gandar, what do you think about Ms. Learner? I think Ms. Learner is amazing. She's actually one of my good friends. I'm really lucky actually to be in the bio group, because every single one of them are, I think of them as really awesome people. Ms. Learner is awesome. She's a great leader. Ms. Chow is a very good friend of mine. You guys know, I love Jones. I got a little bromance going on with Jones. Mr. Gans freaking amazing. He was my student teacher a couple of years ago and I just respect the heck out of that guy. So I love the team that I'm on. Let's see. Oh, just five minutes Gandar? That's not bad. Yeah, Keshav. I like your hashtag. Oh man. Anita, yeah, she is nice, I agree. Anita, did you get the email I sent you? Can you check it out real quick and tell me what you think? And then Anita, what I would like for you to do is give us a little definition and an example based on what I sent you. So just kind of add that to the comments and tell us what you've learned. Okay? So hopefully you can be our teacher with that one. Alright. Alright, what else? So Rishikh, you said you wanted speed dating, okay. Yeah. We can, we can shoot for that. You know what, what I don't, the one thing I don't like about speed dating, and maybe it's just me, because I tend to be critical of my lesson plans. The thing about speed dating is that it's, at least the way that I've done it in the past, is that it's so definition-based, right? It's just like, here's a term, what's the definition for the most part? And it doesn't really get at the heart of things, so maybe I could find a way to do it differently tonight. Alright. I'm not seeing any questions, so we can, it's about other stuff for now until I do see questions. Have I shown you guys this thing? There it is. My wife got me this about a month ago, and this thing is freaking amazing. If you know me, you know that I love honey and that I love spicy stuff. And this is a combination of the two. And this thing, like, you might get grossed out by me saying this, but I put this stuff on my yogurt. You know how I told you guys in the past that I make my own yogurt? I've been putting this stuff on it. It's amazing. Who here would actually try this? This Mike's Hot Honey. And look what it says on the back. The stuff that you can put it on. I don't know if you can see, check it out. Alright, you can put it on pizza, fried chicken, cheese, tea, I don't know, I guess that could be good. Salads, ice cream, fruits. Right? Roasted veggies, seafood, yogurt, that's what I've been doing. Ribs. All these, all this awesome stuff. Oatmeal, I don't know about oatmeal, I guess. I guess I could try that too. Alright, let's see. Yeah Gandar, you're into spicy too? Jonathan, Jeopardy? I guess so. Jeopardy ends up being less interactive. You know, because you only have one person or one group go at a time. So it ends up not being the best use of, like when you think about instructional time and what you could get out of an activity, that ends up not really being a great one from my opinion. It's, it's good to try here and there, but yeah Gandar, you try it? Surya, I should add main parts or key facts, okay? I can work on that. Archit, you try that? Archit, it was awesome talking to you today. Thanks for coming in. Jonathan, the winning team gets stickers? Yeah, I know. I don't dislike Jeopardy. It's just out of all the review games you could play, I would say Jeopardy is probably my least favorite, just because of the lack of interaction that it requires. Keshav, you're not a fan of honey? But it has chili, you're in, that's awesome. Rudra, I didn't know you like spicy food. Rudra, we're even more homies now. Hey Rudra, you know what I've noticed? We haven't been getting as much hate. For those of you guys who don't know, Rudra, whenever I call on Rudra in class, I feel like the two of us kind of get a few looks from people, like hey. So Rudra and I are homies. Because I think I was calling on Rudra so much, right? Rudra, is that what happened? I was calling on you for a while and then we started getting shade thrown our way. Which didn't break our bond, Rudra. Alright, Jonathan, spicy yogurt, yes sir. Serena, can you enjoy it on your garlic bread? I wouldn't say no. You can try it. Yeah, Keshav, kahoot. Yeah, I like kahoot, kahoot's good. For sure. Parth, you love spicy food? Oh, thank you Archit, I appreciate that. Can you explain the, yeah, Ronit, bottleneck effect is when you have a group of organisms in a species, let's say the large member of that species dies. And the ones that survive, they're gonna try to, you know, obviously survive and reproduce. But this new population that survived has a different allele frequency than the old population. And it's probably not representative of the old population. That's what that is. Okay. Ronit, you like flaming hot chips? I don't know about that, man. I like natural spicy stuff. Yeah Rudra, is that what happened? It was the paper passing that, that got a lot of shade thrown at us? Gandar? I don't know what Gandar is saying. There might be an option to do it in groups, though on kahoot. Yeah, I think so. Thank you Kesh, Keshav, bringing the depths again, the definitions. Anita? Anita, okay, Anita has come back with us after reading the stuff I sent her. Microevolution describes factors that change allele frequencies of a gene pool in a species over a long period of time. Okay, whereas macroevolution describes smaller changes in allele frequency, whereas microevolution, wait. Which one, I think you wrote micro and macro. And you wrote micro in both places, Anita. It drastically changes the allele frequency of the old population. Yep, that is correct about, uh, bottleneck. Anita, you run out of characters? Yeah, I like Quizlet Live, that's probably my favorite game, I think, for sure. But it's also one of, at least from my experience, one of the hardest ones to make so far. I've only tried it, I think, once or twice. Uh, would overhunting northern seals count as bottleneck effect? Yeah, Rishik, it would, for sure. Ronit? Alright, Ronit's going with the Espanol. Uh, Anita, what is folate? So Anita, I haven't taught this in my class yet, so my students, if you're hearing this, please do not freak out, because this was in a, um, reading that I gave you that we're gonna cover in class tomorrow on Thursday. But basically, um, regarding folate and vitamin D, that's something that has to do with how much, um, UV rays, sunlight affects it, right? So the more, uh, sunlight your body gets, the higher level of vitamin D you're gonna have, but the lower level of folate you're gonna have, and folate's important for, uh, healthy reproduction. Okay? You like eating chili powder, Gondar, like straight up chili powder by itself? Yeah, Archit, you like Quizlet? How much people are an example of founder effect, right? Yes, Rishik, that is an example, that how much people are an example of the founder effect. Give an example of, so Nikhil, um, I am gonna have you chat with Anita, because she and I have been, um, trying to go at micro versus macro, so Anita, I would like for you to take over, uh, helping Nikhil with that one. Alright, Anita, can you, I know I'm asking a lot probably, can you retype the definition? Since you're saying you, uh, meant macroevolution for the first one? Gondar, if you get too much UV light, it destroys your folate, which is used for reproduction, that is correct. Will folate be on the test? Yes, Ronit, it will be, uh, but you haven't, I'm guessing you haven't read the, um, what am I trying to say, you don't, it's not due for you guys till Thursday since you're period three, but once you read that article that I gave you today, it'll make sense. Cool. Alright, so Anita has come back with us with the definition. Macroevolution describes factors that change allele frequency of a gene pool in a species over a long period of time, whereas micro describes smaller changes in the allele frequency, yeah. And then Anita, can you come back to us with examples, please? Gondar, it's the one thing you actually understood, what did you understand? Oh, folate? Yeah, that's actually kind of a tough one for people to understand, so that's cool, that's really cool that you understood it. For those of you guys who saw my kombucha and saw the spicy honey, which one would you rather try? Yeah, Gondar, it was the folate stuff you understood, cool. Yeah, that's cool. Um, it's not, I guess it's not too challenging, right? But I look forward to teaching it in class. You guys see me okay, is it, or is it blurry? Serena, you'd rather try the honey? Let's see, Gondar says honey, Rudra says honey, Gondar, let's see, spicy, Archit, spicy honey, Serena, honey. It's a bit blurry and a bit dark. Nikhil, I don't know what to do about that, man, all my lights are on in here. Let me see what the heck is going on. Yeah, sorry, I don't know what to do about that. Um, let's see. Shivali's here, hi Shivali, it's not blurry, I'm glad. Jonathan doesn't want to try any of them, Jonathan is a specialist, not a generalist. What's better? What did I do? I didn't do anything, I don't know what made it better. Really? I had, I have done nothing and you guys are saying it's better, so whatever happened? I'm glad that it happened, because I didn't do anything. Okay, Anita's come back. Example of macroevolution is the evolution of primates, as it has taken place over a long period of time. Okay, Syria, how many questions will that be for, for the exam? Syria, to be honest with you, I don't know yet, because I still need to, uh, work on the exam, I'm not, we're not nearly done with it yet. Still needs a lot of work. Gondar, it's like fluctuating, oh yeah, you know what, I noticed that too, why is that? It goes from light to dark, right, you guys? I'm seeing that too, I have no idea why. It's not my lights, my lights seem to be fine. So I don't know what's going on. You know what I like though, guys? I really like that it's getting dark around, you know, like 7:20, 7:30 now, I'm a big fan of that. I feel like my, the thing I like the least about winter, and it kind of affects me too actually in a way, is just how dark it gets and like around four or five o'clock, not a fan of that at all. Okay. Yeah, I don't know what's going on with these lights, you guys. I mean, they're fine, they're not actually going, um, they're not fluctuating in person with me, so whatever, this video is doing something. Okay. Let's see. Ishida, can you not see me still? Anita, microevolution describes small changes in allele frequencies such as color in rats, yep, that is correct. Nikhil, I don't know why my lights are fluctuating. Learner's like 30 multiple choice, 10 matching and one VIST, yeah, that sounds about right. Happened again, Gondar, I don't know, man. Anita, tell me, like, tell me how confident you feel now about macro versus micro, as opposed to where you were half hour ago. Be honest. Give me a TBH moment. Gondar, I love that you're cheering Anita on, that's awesome. There's a movie that's on in the background with Will Smith and these robots. And I forget the name of the movie. I don't know if you guys have seen it. I think I only saw it once, I don't really remember much about it. Shivali, what we need to know about cladograms for the test? Okay, Shivali, so I actually have not made this question yet, but I could either show you a cladogram and ask you different things about it, like, you know, um, parts, part D of the cladogram, like what was the, what do part D, E, and F have in common? Like what, one feature or structure or phenotype do they have in common? Or, um, let's see. I guess I, I won't necessarily ask you to, well, yeah, I might ask you to sort of build a cladogram by, by me giving you specific information and then ask you questions based on that. So I think that if you, uh, re-watch that one cladogram, uh, video lecture that I haven't made, it was actually on Bozeman Science, um, and it's something that you guys did in class. I think if you just watch that again, then you'll be golden, because that, that'll help you out big time. Alright. Yeah, Anita, you're much more confident, because you don't ever even remember going over in class, okay? I'm glad you're feeling better about it now, I appreciate you also helping everybody else. Jonathan, you're right, it's iRobot. That's what that is, it's interesting. No problems, Shivali. Why is Will Smith a thing again? I don't, I don't know if he's a, first of all, Serena, I'm offended, because I'm a huge fan of Will Smith. Um, Will Smith was, I don't know about your guys' generation, I don't know how you guys feel about Will Smith, but he was sort of like a superstar of my generation, right? Like growing up, I watched Fresh Prince of Bel-Air, um, and he just kind of, he's been in so many movies that I think for me growing up that I've seen, so. Yeah, so I'm a Will Smith fan, as far as his, uh, you know, his acting and his movies for the most part. I think a couple of his movies fall short, uh, but overall, I like him a lot and like his movies. Alright, Karunya, it's not Men in Black, but I do like Men in Black. There's an amazing Hindi movie called Robot, huh? Okay. You guys know that when I was a kid, I used to watch a lot of Hindi movies, like a ton of them? Because in Iran at the time, I don't know, Iranian movies kind of tend to be a little depressing sometimes. Uh, they were as a kid too, so there was, there was a ton of, I watched Japanese cartoons and Hindi movies as a kid. Um, and then Japanese, like, shows and soap operas too. Alright, let's see. Is because he's become a YouTuber now? Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Uh, Syria, cladogram, uh, cladogram is basically a diagram that shows evolutionary relationships. So Syria, I really think you should watch that video I was just talking about, the one with Bozeman Science. So just type in Bozeman Science, watch that video, B-O, I think it's S-E-M-A-N, uh, and watch the cladogram. So just type and go YouTube, Bozeman, um, cladograms, and watch that video. Watch just the first 10 minutes of it, I think, and you'll get it. Alright, let's see. John, hey John, do you have to know different types of homo species in humans? Um, I don't think so, John. I don't think I'm gonna, I'm gonna go that route. They just had the sequel, sequel for what, Gondar? Will Smith is a legend, Jonathan, I agree with you. Is he really 50 years old? You're kidding me? Will Smith is 50 years old? That is ridiculous, oh my God, one of my dogs is snoring over there. I think it's Dakota. Alright, do you understand Hindi or do you use subtitles? Uh, I think it was subtitles, because I don't understand Hindi, so I think it was a lot of subtitles. Can you briefly explain the difference between embryonic development and comparative anatomy? That's not something, so Ronit, out of everything, that's not something I want you to really, uh, worry about. I don't have any specific questions that get to that of like the difference between those two, I don't think you need to, that's, I would take that off my plate if I were you. There's a sequel to iRobot, is that what you guys are saying? Do you understand Hindi and Japanese? No, Archit, I don't understand either one. The Japanese one, the Hindi stuff was all subtitled, the Japanese stuff was dubbed over, so, yeah. I wish I understood both of those languages, but I do not. No, sir, I understand Farsi, I'm fluent in Farsi, um, and I, I can kinda hold my own in Spanish, but I need to practice more. I did wanna learn Japanese about 10 years ago. Ronit? Uh, mechanical isolation. Alright, somebody give Ronit the definition of mechanical isolation. Now I'll just tell you, Ronit, it's when, um, sexual organs, let's say for example, are not a, are a mismatch, are not a fit for each other. There's Robot 2.0, oh, for the, not for the iRobot, but the Robot movie, there's a sequel, okay. Do you remember the names of the Hindi movies you've watched? I don't, Rudra, but I can tell you they're old, man, like I used to watch these in the 80s, before you guys were born. So I'm sure they're, I don't know, out there somewhere, but I don't know what they're called. They all had happy endings for the most part. That's something that Hindi movies had in common, and that's something that they were, that I think set them apart from Iranian movies, because you'd see happy endings versus the Iranian ones, you'd see mostly sad endings. Alright, Serena, you're originally from West Philadelphia, is that right? You spend the majority of your time on the plane? That is awesome, Serena, I like what you're writing, for Fresh Prince. Alright, Gondar. Okay, what came out confusing, I don't get it. Alright. Uh, Shivali, with stuff about the oxygen catastrophe and that worksheet be on the test? Yes, as long as you can answer those questions on that, uh, worksheet, you'll be fine. Yep, thank you, Jonathan. John, mechanical isolation, thank you very much, John. How did you watch Hindi movies without understanding them? Um, subtitles? Yeah. What language did you take in high school? Uh, Parth, I took Spanish in high school, but I wish, I wish I could go back in time, I guess, and take it a little more seriously and stick with it, uh, and really treat it with, uh, like this, like as in, here's the thing that I think I want, I would want somebody your guys' age to understand. Some of what you do now may seem really crappy, like you don't wanna do it. Things like, you know, taking a language class, or, uh, if you're taking, you know, music class on the side or whatever, and they may seem like a pain in the butt, but when you're an adult, those things, like, that's really cool to know those things. It's really, it's really awesome to speak a second or a third or a fourth language. It's really awesome to be able to play an instrument, and you just get really busy as an adult, so. I, I wish that, uh, as a kid, or as a teenager, I had taken some of those things more seriously, such as, you know, like, I took Spanish, I think, one and two, I don't remember if I took three, but I wish that I had kept up with it, so that I could be fluent in it now. Alright. Gondar, the Hindi movies have exaggeration? Yeah? The Persian movies, not so much, man, not exaggerated, they're just sad, like realities of life, it's really sad. Man, I remember this one movie called, this Persian movie called like The Engagement or something. I remember being like a nine-year-old and watching it in theaters and just being like really sad about the ending of it. Uh, because nothing ended well. There was no engagement. It's really messed up. Woo, alright, co-evolution, Anita, co-evolution is when two organisms are evolving based off of each other, like based on the interaction with each other, like bees and flowers, for example. Alrighty, what else we got? Archit, time travel? Um, Gondar, yeah, Gondar's got the definition down. Ronit, shrinkle, we haven't said shrinkle in a long time. I don't even remember why I said that in class, and I haven't used it in a long time, so thank you for reminding me. Usually Gabby reminds me of that, uh, and I think she might have forgotten too. Jonathan, when different species evolve at the same rate, just remember that there's an interaction component to that, okay? They have to be interacting with each other. Gondar, what shrinkle? I think, I think I accidentally said in class one day, I was talking about, um, yeah, I think we were talking about hyper, hypo, and iso, right? Hypertonic, hypotonic, isotonic. And I talked about how if a cell is in a hypertonic, uh, solution, that it's gonna shrink, and I also wanted to say wrinkle, like it's gonna shrink and get wrinkled, and somehow shrinkle came out. And we all laughed together pretty good, and then, uh, it just became a word that we used in class. Yep, Jonathan, you got it, based off of each other. Would bacteria and humans be an example of co-evolution? Yeah? Yeah, I think so. In a sense, yeah, they are. Gondar, yeah, shrinkle, yep, yep, use it, shrinkle should be a word, it's a combination of shrink and wrinkle. This movie is so CGI, it's just the whole thing. I don't know, how do you guys feel about movies that are like 90% CGI? You guys like that? I think it's become so much more, uh, common, and, and I guess normal. Yeah, Gondar, you're gonna, I would, hey, if that goes in, that'd be amazing, just file a petition. Depends on how well it's done. Okay, yeah, makes sense, Serena, I guess so. I have a friend who works in the film industry and she is, uh, an editor. But I don't think she does anything like CGI related, I think she just takes clips and just kind of finds a way to kind of seam them together or whatever, add music. She's also a voiceover recorder, which is pretty cool. Um, Anita, in co-evolution, can animals against each other? I guess so, Anita, it doesn't have to be like a cooperation, it doesn't have to be like they're helping each other, it could be a situation too where they're actually trying to harm each other, right? As long as there's an interaction component, and that's what's sort of creating that, like, hey, I'm gonna up you, then you're gonna up me, then I'm gonna up you, then you're gonna up me. I think that's kind of what we're talking about in co-evolution. Parth, how different was Montevista from now and then, when I was a Montevista student? I don't know, you guys, I didn't, I wasn't, I wish I was more like you guys when I was in high school, but I wasn't. Uh, I think, I don't know, I didn't take a lot of things all that seriously, especially my academics. I did fine, I mean, I, I ended up, I think, with a, I forget, like a 3.2 or something like that, um, I don't know, I just, I was not all that motivated. Like a 3.2 or something like that. I don't know. I just, I was not all that motivated, you guys. I think I cared a lot about sports. I, I wanted to play soccer all the time. I wanted to hang out with my friends. I don't know that I was necessarily a lazy student or a totally unmotivated student, but I look back at it and I'm like, man, my level of motivation just changed so much when I went to college. You know, at UC Santa Cruz in my graduate program, the amount of effort I was putting in was, you know, the difference of night and day. High school, I was not all that motivated. So, you know, one of those other things that I look back at, I'm like, hey, it is what it is, but I wish I'd, I had been more motivated. I wish I had kind of found a drive within myself at an earlier age. But such is life. Alright, let's see. If they can, for example, yep, good job, Gondar. Archit, soccer is your favorite sport? That's awesome, man. I'm into that. I'm definitely into that. Cricket, Gondar? Gondar, I actually don't know the rules of cricket. Yeah. I'm sure it'd be fun to play. You know what, you guys? I'm bad at swinging something for sports. Like I can throw stuff just fine. I can kick stuff just fine, you know. I can place a soccer ball almost anywhere. I can curve it, I can bend it, I can, but when it comes to swinging, I am no good. Mr. Hoffman took me to batting cage once. I remember staying there and he'd like, the ball came at me. I'm like, why is it so fast? Like 100 miles an hour. He's like, no, it's like 60. For some reason, I'm just, it's, I think it's because I didn't do it when I was a young kid. So the idea of like grabbing a bat and like trying to swing it and just be exact with what you're hitting is really challenging. Called a wicked. Yep. Gondar, you'd rather swing? That's probably because you're good at it. Serena, you had the same issue where you couldn't swing? Yeah, I've tried. I'm really terrible at it. But you know what? No, I shouldn't say that because I can swing a badminton racket. Rackets? Not a racket. Yeah, yeah. Or a tennis racket just fine. And I'm actually pretty decent at badminton. Okay, at tennis. So I can swing fine. I think it's the idea of like swinging a bat with both hands and just being that accurate because with a tennis racket, right, you have so much surface area where you can hit the ball. Whereas with that bat, you have like this much space. Hmm, interesting. See, like when you say the most amount of runs you've made is 27, I don't know what that means. Is that good? Is that bad? Rackets, yeah. Any of you guys here played badminton? I took Mr. Jones with me once to this place, forget what it's called, but it's behind a Fry's Electronics in Campbell. And we had a good time. Jones is pretty good at sports. He picks it up pretty quickly. Anita, binomial nomenclature is things like Homo sapiens. So it's the way that we classify organisms. Yeah, Parth loves badminton. Oh, you guys are playing badminton in PE? That's cool. Oh, I see. It's okay for your age, but to go pro, it's not so good. Yeah, you know what? I think Montevista Badminton is like a rock star team. I think we win a ton of championships, right? Montevista is supposed to have a really legit badminton team. Yeah, good job, Gondar. Classifying organisms by giving them a two-part name. How was the academics back then, Parth?
Probably very much the same in a lot of different ways. It wasn't all that, I don't think it was all that different. I, you know, one thing was different. The amount of AP classes that were offered were less back then, which I actually, to be honest with you, I like because we had classes that I think are applicable, things that are important, like a speech class. We had a driver's ed class. We had cooking class. We had woodshop, which we still do. Not at Montevista, Montevista probably had it too, but at one point, my freshman year when I was at Lindbrook, we had auto shop. There are all these classes that I think would just be really good to have and there wasn't so much emphasis on AP classes and I think students were not as focused as, like students didn't put all their focus on taking more AP classes, which I appreciated about my time. You know, I'm glad that I went through high school when I did because, I don't know, I just, the idea of an AP class, being a college-level class and how students just want to take more and more of it at the age of 15, you know, 14, 15, 16, it's, I wonder about that sometimes.
Alright, thank you, Gondar, for the info. I'm learning more about cricket. How serious were people back then? About what? Yep. Yeah, it is similar to baseball. Yeah, I would agree with that. So we got five minutes. Any, anything else you want to ask me regarding anything evolution-related or we can just keep chatting away and getting to know each other better? Whichever works better for you all. I am here for you. And then when we're done, I'm going to go work on my test and I'm going to work on making a review activity for tomorrow. And I gotta make dinner. We have a live discussion during class tomorrow. John, I wasn't planning on having a, oh, actually, yes, yes, about the skin color. Yes, we will. You guys played badminton or cricket at Jollyman? That's fun. That sounds fun. Jollyman is, is one of the parks that I kind of, I call, I grew up in. I spent so much time at Jollyman during my high school years. It's awesome. When I drive by it, I still have, there's definitely moments where I reminisce about all the good times I had there. Yakeeshav, you've been going there since two or four? That's awesome. That's a great park, man. Great location, right? It's, it's a good spot. It's got a lot of different stuff too. Do they have a place for barbecuing and stuff at Jollyman? I don't, I don't think they do. I don't remember if they do. How does a comparison of human and chimp chromosomes provide evidence of common ancestry? Because when we compare those chromosomes, Anita, we see that they have genes that are located in similar locations and and those genes are coding for the same thing. Or for very similar things. So it's like, I think 98 point something percent similar as far as our DNA. Yakeeshav, they do? Oh, okay. I didn't know they have a barbecue spot. Yeah, I'd be down to learn cricket, although I will be terrible because it requires swinging something. They do now? Yeah, I don't, I think back in my day they did not, but things were different a little bit back then. Anything else you guys got for me? I gotta figure out what to make for dinner tonight. Taco night, that's what I'm going to do. Taco night. Let's see. Thank you, Gondar, stepping in and helping me out. You guys want to see the dogs? The doggos? Yeah? Let me see if I can get them over here. Nope, I thought they'd be laying here, but they're not. Come on, puppies. You guys hear them? They are coming. Alright. There's Dakota. Hi, buddy. Say hi to my students. Say hi, Dakota. Hi, buddy. You're such a good boy. Here's a closer picture. Oh. Dakota went away. Hi, buddy. And then here's Kuchuk. Buddy, say hi to Kuchuk. Yeah, you yawning? Yeah. There's Kuchuk. And there's dogs, the doggos. Somebody say cats? Jonathan, I don't have cats, man. I got two dogs. I like cats, but I'm not necessarily a cat guy. Thank you, Ronnet. I love these guys. These dogs are, are pretty awesome. Pretty awesome. Alright, anything else? Kuchuk? Yeah, Kuchuk is, she's happy. I really wanted to take him for a walk today, you guys, and I'm kind of bummed out that I didn't. I was hoping that when I got home, I could take him for a walk, but especially now that it's raining, I want to take advantage of it. Oh, Kuchuk is sleepy. Yeah. Did you guys hear Kuchuk yawn? Did you hear Dakota's breathing? He breathed so like. That's okay. No problem. I know I gave her a hard name, Kuchuk. That's actually a pretty good effort, Archit. Thank you, Anita. I, I love them too. Kuchuk's drinking water now. These guys are, they're awesome. I love these dogs. Such great dogs. Who here has met my dogs? I know some of you met my dogs when I brought them to school that one day. Any of you guys meet them? Hopefully I can bring them again towards the end of the school year. Yeah. You guys see what Dakota's doing now? Check this out. He decided he's just gonna lay there. And here's Kuchuk. Hey, Dakota. What you doing, buddy? Dakota, what you doing? It's okay, buddy. You can relax. Alright, let's see. Yeah, John, you did, right? You met the dogs? When's the next time you're going to bring them, Gondar? Probably very close to the end of the school year. Yeah, Archit, you met my dogs too. Thanks, John. They're, they are adorable. Yeah, I brought them in after first semester finals. Yes, sir. Dakota's evolving. You know what's happening with Dakota and Kuchuk? Both are getting older. Dakota's, he's getting, he's going kind of wide around his eyes. Hi, thanks, Kuchuki. Kuchuk just came here to lick me. And Kuchuk is definitely starting to go wide around her muzzle, so. Yeah, hi. These guys are getting old. Kuchuk's about to turn 10 next month and Dakota's turning nine next month. Crazy. Alright, you guys, I am going to head out and grab, hi, hi. I'm going to head out and grab some dinner and and start working on some review activities. Thank you all for joining me. It was a pleasure chatting with you all. And see you tomorrow or Thursday in class. Bye, everybody.